Third, 4:00 P.M. Are we ready? Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Today is Monday, February the third. It is 4:00 P.M. If I can get a roll call.
Mayor Shirley, here. Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Okay, if I can get everyone that's able to to stand up and say the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
(inaudible)
I am going to go to awards and proclamations. Just a real quick note, they are gonna experience a temporary power outage at 4:15, so we're gonna try to read these as quickly as possible because apparently it's gonna be out for a while. So if I can go ahead and go start awards and proclamations real quick.
Item 3.1, the month of February 2014 is National Ambux Month in the city of Salina. Natasha Gawes, President of Noon Network Ambux will read the proclamation. Natasha?
Hello, everybody. Okay, to proclaim the month of February 2014 as National Ambux Month. Whereas Ambux is dedicated to creating mobility and independence for people with disabilities, and whereas the recognition of Ambux as an organization making an important difference in communities across the United States as a noteworthy event, and whereas the city of Salina is proud to boast two chapters of Ambux, the Salina AM Breakfast Bandits and Noon Network. And whereas Noon Network Chapter of Ambux is a chapter now celebrating 21 years of service, Salina AM Chapter is now celebrating 54 years of service, and whereas the city of Salina is proud to be the home of Ambux past National President Tom Lottis, the Great Plains Region Director Karen Bidrickson, and District 5D Governor Linda Andrew. And whereas each of the chapters have various community projects in which they participate, such as funding and building fully accessible playgrounds and public parks and schools, financial assistance to children and adults with disabilities, building ramps to individuals' homes, providing therapeutic anthrax for children, and funding scholarships for students in physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech and language pathology degree programs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the city of Salina, Kansas, hereby proclaim the month of February 2014 as National Ambux Month. In the city of Salina, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the service and the wholesome of building of communities they render. Adopted this third day of February 2014 by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Salina, Kansas, the Board of County Commissioners of the city of Salina, Kansas, Barbara V. Shirley, Mayor.
Do you have any events planned for the month?
We have, we are participating in the Special Olympics in February. Visibility buttons will be worn by our members of our group. We also will be participating at the home show at the Bi Center. We have our bid opportunity auction on March 2nd, which is where, you know, we raise most of our funds for this, that we give away for the year. We have other events that are planned as well, and especially the week of February 2nd, which is actually Visibility Day for the month of February.
Good deal. I have your signed proclamation.
Item 3.2, the month of February 2014 is Black History Month in the city of Salina. Private First Class Sean Udofia will read the proclamation.
Black History Month is an opportunity for all Americans to honor the rich cultural heritage and legacy of people of African descent and pay tribute to them and the community, to the community organizations that contribute to the social, cultural, economic, and political life of Salina. And whereas, the citizens of Salina have been in the forefront of efforts to establish a caring, compassionate society based on the inherent dignity of all its members by taking a leadership role aimed at eliminating all forms of discrimination and disadvantage, and by recognizing that a fundamental strength of our community is based on the diversity among us. Now therefore, I, Barb Shirley, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2014 Black History Month, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in celebrating the diversity and character of our community and highlight the importance of sharing all culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, be affixed this day, February 3rd, 2014.
Do you have any plans, any activities planned for the month? Thank you. That's your mic, don't mind me right there.
There is a NAACP Black History Month program, Saturday, February 22nd, on Grand Avenue, United Methodist Church, 304 West Grand. There are youth activities from 11:00 A.M. to 4:00 P.M., with lunch invited. There's a 5:00 P.M. discussion, and at 6:00 P.M. there's a soul food dinner. All questions welcome. And there will be an event on Tuesday, February 11th, at 7:00 P.M. at Sam's Chapel. Cheryl Brown Henderson will be speaking at Kansas Wesleyan University. Thank you.
I do. I have your signed proclamation.
The month of February 2014 is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in the city of Salina. Sheila B., an LBSW Teen Violence Coordinator, will read the proclamation.
Hello, thank you for having me today. Excuse me. Whereas females between the ages of 16 and 24 are more vulnerable to intimate partner violence, experiencing abuse at a rate almost triple the national average. And whereas, one in three adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. And whereas, high school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. Whereas, young people victimized by the dating partner are more likely to engage in risky sexual behavior and unhealthy dating behaviors, and the experience may disrupt normal development of self-esteem and body image. And whereas, nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that incidents of abuse took place in a school building or on school grounds. And whereas, only 33% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse. And 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue, or admit they do not know if it is one. And whereas, by providing young people with education about healthy relationships and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas, it is essential to raise community awareness and to provide training for teachers, counselors, and school staff so that they may recognize when youth are exhibiting signs of dating violence. And whereas, the establishment of Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. And whereas, everyone has the right to a safe and healthy relationship and to be free from abuse. Now therefore, the city of Salina hereby proclaim February 2014 be designated as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and urges our citizens to recognize and assist all those that serve the rights and needs of victims of teen dating violence.
Do you have any events planned for the month of February?
We sure do. We own the bargain basket at DEVAC does, and so we're gonna have a display about, anybody in the public can come by and see that. It'll have facts and figures about teen dating violence. And we've also launched the Expect Respect Leadership Program at Lakewood Middle School. And so that is gonna be an opportunity for peers to be trained on how to be role models for their peers and be resources for students that are having either firsthand experience of this or know somebody.
That's great that you're going out and getting the younger kids involved so they can notice issues like this quicker.
Yeah, so we're pretty excited. And if anybody in the community would like for us to speak, we can come out and speak to youth groups and whatnot, so we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I have your signed proclamation. Do we do anything with the call pass? That would be wonderful. When I went to the committee meetings, they were like, very interested in this. Thank you. Do I have time to do the consent agenda? Okay, go ahead and do the consent agenda, please.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 27, 2014. Item 6.2, award the East Magnolia Landscape Project, project number 13-2997, to Landscape Consultants of Salina for $135,112.04 plus a 5% construction contingency of $6,755.60.
Is there anything a commissioner would like amended or moved from the agenda?
I'd like item 6.2 removed from the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda unless item 6.2 is presented.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Move on to administration.
I have 6-2.
I'm sorry, back to 6-2. Mr. Gage, since we're on a three-minute time here, are we gonna have time to do this one, or do I need to bring that back?
I would recommend that you, at this point, probably take a recess pending the electricity being turned off, which my understanding is that it will occur at 4:15 and last till 4:45.
Okay.
If that's correct. At that point, if you want to, now could be a time to look at Mr. Binkston, but I believe we could probably do our executive session items, and then when we're finished, come back and deal with the last three open meeting items.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Is it reasonable?
And will we hit citizens forum at that time as well?
Right.
If anybody wants to stick around for 30 minutes.
Yeah, if they do. So, we meet weekly, so we do have plenty of opportunities as well.
Yeah, just in case.
Do we have our executive session forum or time or anything? Commissioner Blanchard?
So, we're gonna do, we're gonna go 30 minutes? Is that?
Well, it's up to you. You can go 30 minutes, come back, and then go back. We won't be finished in 30 minutes since we're gonna ask for an hour, I think, there.
Okay. Then, Madam Mayor, I move, we recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets of the corporation, and that the reason that public discussion of the information would competibly disadvantage the corporation and for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and reconvene at 4:45 P.M.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we expect any action, Mr. Binkston?
None that I'm aware of, no. But I, we will be resuming in the open meeting following the balance of the regular agenda.
While pending the electrical outage, we are going into executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we are in executive session. We're ready to go back. We are back from executive session. Lights are working. Don't expect any more power outages, so we'll go on to item 6.2.
Okay. Award the East Magnolia Landscape Project, project number 13-2997, to Landscape Consultants of Salina for $135,112.04 plus a 5% construction contingency of $6,755.60.
Mr. Stack?
Yeah, this project was advertised and bid a couple times last year, and so we definitely had some questions on when we should bid it and why we only got one bidder.
So, is there any specific questions on that, Randy?
What's the status of this project right now?
The Waters, yes.
Went out of business, I guess.
It is Earth Care landscaping.
That's right, yeah, Earth Care, yeah. Waters still has all the True Value stores and has still pretty good business, but this was the part he wanted to let go. And I guess was able, sold it to Landscape Consultants, or they, I'm not sure how that happened now, but they basically have a lot of the same employees now that Earth Care had before. And so, the main employee, Dan Fierello, who was the lead designer and estimator for the Waters Earth Care project, you know, just asked us, said, "Is this something that we could, you know, take on with our new company, which basically has the same group, just a different name and a different owner, which is Matt Waggoner, who's somebody we wanted to bid on at the first time, but he just did not?" So, that's the only status I can really say that I know of.
The contract is with Earth Care, though, correct?
It is, and so, basically, they are no longer in business, and so we don't have a contract with anybody right now. We had to pull the, the bid bond was cashed, basically, so they gave it up and left. They left it at this point.
So, in theory, this project should go back to the drawing board?
Well, that's the question. I mean, that's what we're asking today, is that you can either award it to the new group that's kind of taken on the Waters personnel, or the Earth Care personnel, or to rebid it, have to repackage it, have to split it up. There's all kinds of other options, but basically with the new purchasing, you know, thought that was sort of the new, a couple weeks ago, you guys talked about, basically, accept as otherwise authorized by a governing body upon a finding that alternative processes in the public's interest. So, in this case, we felt like, you know, this is, it'd be nice to get the project done with a group who was gonna do it in the first place and for the same price. The concern is always you're bidding in and make it one bidder and on a bigger price. So, that is a concern, or we could get more bidders.
Yeah, Commissioners, if we had, if last time we bid it, we had multiple bidders in line.
Oh, yeah.
First thing we'd say is, I would recommend is that we need to rebid, and a lot of bidders and opportunity.
Right.
We had a hard time getting one bidder interested because of the scale, it's a little bit different type landscape project, and because it's in a right-of-way.
Correct.
So, given that they're willing to, this new group is willing to take it on, same scope with a couple real minor changes in there, and just same price, just with an extended timeframe and a little bit more time to get the performance bond, quite honestly, I look at that as a very positive force because we were trying to figure out how we're gonna get this done, because quite, we could probably do it in-house, but we would be really neglecting a lot of maintenance because this is a pretty big project, it'd take a long time. It's just not something that our crews are used to doing on a daily basis.
I was a little bit worried about the legal side of it, and, you know, being the steward of taxpayers' money and all that, this is, because it is a larger project, to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck.
Yeah, that's why I said if we had more bidders, we would definitely want to rebid, but knowing that we didn't have any interest at all before, we felt this is probably the most reasonable approach.
Yeah, I would say also, I mean, my understanding is, and this is all just kind of second-hand knowledge, but I, my understanding, Mr. Waggoner actually started Earth Care originally, sold it to Waters, Waters sold, he, and at the time, I believe Waters laid everybody off, he has since bought it, and projects like this allow him to hire back that same staff. So, I think that's, I think that's good for Salina, I guess if we needed a silver lining to it. And I would agree, only getting one bidder two different times, I kind of think we're as good as we're gonna get, but I like the fact that they did rehire some of the employees and kept, for the most part, Salina Company up and running, and kept, for the most part, the same employees from what I understand. So, I think that's, that's a good way to kick it off for them.
I had an additional question about, in your discussion, the project, item number two, changing the rock requirement.
Rock, right.
To me, that seems like you're degrading the material in the project. Is there a reason for that?
Well, it has to, it has to.
That you're lowering the cost, probably.
Yeah, the 3/8 to 1 1/4 Common River rock, be changed to 0 to 1-inch Common River rock. It's a little bit different size, and that's, I guess that's what they have. It's one thing that sometimes we try to get a certain specification, and sometimes it's not hard to, you just can't get it. I mean, you might be able to get that size, but they said it, you have to go to Colorado to get it. And so, it's just, it was just something they asked, and we could try to hold them to it. I mean, it's something we could, we just felt like it's, looking at the degradation, we can get pretty close with what they're asking, or what they're submitting, anyway.
So, Dan, the reason the change is, they recommended it because they didn't believe they could possibly get the other rock that we were, that we spec.
Yeah, and we could definitely go back to them on that and say, "Well, we really, I mean, why, why can't you get it, or is it gonna cost you more? Are you really giving us a, you know, not as good a material, I guess, if that's your concern."
And this is the rock that the subsurface water basically is held in?
Yeah.
Do we, do we believe that the smaller rock will have a negative impact on, on what it needs to do with the water?
That's why we'd have to, we'd have to make sure there isn't a lot of fine in it, so the, you know, the 0-inch thing is a concern.
Switch the 0-inch.
Right, that's a concern. They understood the intent of it, so it was hard to figure out, because when you think of Common River rock, you can get it there now, and it's pretty clean. I mean, you can go there and get it today. It's, I have it, you know, we have that all over the city. So, seemed like a fair enough change, but you're right, 0 inches probably isn't the right, that's probably not the right spec. So, we can go back to them on that if that's, that probably would be something worth talking about.
Yeah, Commissioners, I would, I would recommend that if you approve this, that you approve it with the original spec for the rock, but if for some reason there is a problem with that, that we can negotiate and try to figure out a substitute that will perform properly for the project.
Right.
Just to make sure.
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, he actually said 1-inch minus, so it's probably not the best way to have said that. Yeah, there's no way we would allow dirt and 200 fine stuff in there, it doesn't make any sense. So, I think, yeah, I think we can make that work, but.
And I don't think they're gonna go with a, it's probably not to go with a smaller rock, because if they went with a smaller rock, they'd have to get a lot more of it.
Right.
And so, it's probably just a matter of grading it and the nomenclature that they're putting on that product.
Yeah, we can see, but I think that's what the manager said's fair, we can make sure.
What, on this, Dan, just to kind of pull on the other two items, number three, maybe just number one, and that is the date, May 15th to June 15th, is that?
Yeah, it didn't seem to be a problem for our park staff. It's, we're happy to get it done in the spring, mostly, so we thought, you know, if it wants to take till September, that would be a little tougher, but just picked 30 days, and still in, technically, that's still spring, actually. Okay. So, they were okay with that.
And so, that would be, if we, if we were to approve this, kind of on that, with the same number, would we have to identify that one being different from the original contract? If we're saying, approve the rock with the original.
Yeah, you're bas, we were asking, I guess my intent was to ask you to approve this contract with those exceptions that they're asking for, basically.
Yeah, Commissioners, I think you could approve it as recommended by staff in the report, subject to retaining the existing rock spec or a suitable substitute.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Stack.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this matter? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we award the East Magnolia Landscape Project, city project number 13-2997, to Landscape Consultants of Salina for $135,112.04 plus a 5% construction contingency of $6,755.60, with the inclusion of staff recommendations. Except that, we would like to have the rock spec remain the same unless a suitable substitute can be found.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries, 5-0. On to administration.
Item 7.1, first reading ordinance number 14-10730, amending section 5-25 of the city code to permit consumption of alcoholic liquor on the Salina Bicentennial Center parking lot and grounds.
Deon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you said, the item before you is an amendment, ordinance change, if you will, or an ordinance amendment. Basically, all it boils down to is the prior language said that it could be served within the confines of the Bicentennial Center. This expands that definition to include the grounds as well. So, the idea would be like, for instance, at a Bombers game, if they wanted to have tailgating in the parking lot, that would legally be allowed. So, in a nutshell, that's all the change boils down to, and if you have additional questions, certainly be willing to answer them. We've got Ron Wright out here as well from the Bicentennial Center, and Daniel, so we'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Is it fairly easy to define the grounds? That, so that a client, customer would know pretty easily what that includes?
It is fairly easy to define. If you look at the management agreement, it's very clearly articulated within the management agreement that we have with Global Spectrum where we have identified all the grounds, and it aligns with that.
Would that be identified with, when somebody drives into the parking lot? Would they know where it begins and ends?
I want to say yes, but, you know, certainly there could be some interpretation if you got over into, maybe into the fairgrounds area, maybe there's, could be some gray area there, if you will. But both parking lots and then the parcel that I'm gonna say is back to the east and the north, or the north and the east, that is the vacant ground, is basically what it encompasses.
Commissioners, we anticipate the need for physical markings if there's this particular event, because the last thing we want to do is, well, they have, I mean, we're gonna have an alcohol license that we don't want to put out at risk by virtue of taking alcohol where it's not supposed to be, although in this case, I'm not sure if our license is as big an issue as just our local ordinance violation if we do that. But part of what we have to do is propagate rules that I have to sign off on. So, the basic process would be is, we'll ask the folks over at Global to kind of put together their plan of how they would want to implement this, we'll look at it, Deon, and get his thoughts, and then at some point, we'll sign off on it. And part of it will be is, how do you physically sign or mark that area to make sure that there isn't any confusion by participants, folks that are at the event. I think that's gonna have to happen in some form, and we'll see what they come up with on that, but otherwise, that's just part of the rulemaking that we can handle.
So, in reading, in reading the ordinance, the section, the section one, which kind of now is changed to handle outside and vicinity, are number one and two, is it, is it read, and this might be a question for Greg and so on, is it read that section one and then "and" only in association with a special event approved by the city manager?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, it, the leading language, of course, relates to that state statute, and we could put an "and" in there, I think that would be more clear.
Well, I could, you have to meet the criteria.
But there are two independent circumstances.
Right. But they're, but they're both, that, do you have to, do you have to have, I guess my question is, are you gonna require to have, is it, every one of these instances gonna be required to be approved as a special event by the city manager?
No, those are two independent bases under 41719-D for the consumption of alcohol. Under one, it's strictly the fact that under the statute, if you designate particular areas, such as those that are, those that are listed, that's just the general, if you will, kind of blanket authorization. As long as the city commission says that alcohol can be consumed there, then that's, that works, and then, and the statute doesn't even necessarily require the regulations. That's something that we have done in order to better manage to those circumstances. Under two, we're dealing with specifically those situations under the statute where that must be done in relation to a special event approved by the city manager.
So, on, on these four locations, that Memorial Hall, Smoky Hill Museum, Community Theater, and Bicentennial Center, the rules and regulations adopted for such locations, do we have anything currently that are, the rules and regulations for each of those? I mean, I know we have, and kind of what I'm getting at is that I could see something like this kind of take, something taking the form of a tailgate party, where you've got people driving around, and there's traffic hazards and everything, and so you're gonna need some sort of traffic plan and, and sort of area delineated for where you can hold the event, you're gonna have certain enforcement, I think that you would have some supervision, there'd be some liability and so on. And so, it just, it seems to me that there really, in order for this to work, needs to be some really clearly defined rules and regulations in place, because I can see this just being a very tricky thing to, you know, to handle if, if we don't have clearly defined, and I think Commissioner Hardy was getting it, not just delineating where this special area is, that may change from time to time, but what's required, I mean, there are required security, like you mean, there are required security like you would on a special event permit type thing, um, and who's responsible for what, and, and who's allowed to bring in what, um, if you're gonna allow alcohol, can someone bring in their own cooler, or do they have to purchase it on the premises? I mean, is that, those are the kind of things that I'm concerned about.
Yeah, those, those are all very good questions, and another reason that the style of this is set up in this way is so that you don't clog that ordinance with all those details that you could change even later. And so that's why it does reference the, um, excuse me, the rules and regulations, so that in this particular instance with the Bicentennial Center, we can get into all those questions and, and have that set of guidelines to address those.
Well, and I, I, I agree with Commissioner Blanchard. In fact, I wondered when I read this, while on her, if anybody needs to drink, um, surrounding, but when you bring up tailgate parties, I understand a little bit more why that'd be necessary, but...
Commissioners, it may also be, tailgate's just an example, there could be, for example, uh, maybe there's a big event and I'm gonna just, I'm not gonna give away anything here, I'm gonna make this up, but let's say towards the end of the bomber's season, it's a little warmer outside, and they say, "Hey, it's the last, maybe last home game or something", and they say, "Let's have an event outside," in which they're coordinating and through the use of the license and, and selling, it's not a bring your own kind of thing or anything like that. And so it's just a special event outdoors, associated, a kind of a pre-event, um, with event that's already going to occur. That's another example, the type of thing that could happen. But, uh, yeah, the, the purpose of the rules and regulations, we could fill up the codebook here with about probably five to ten pages of stuff if we really wanted to. We felt it was better to keep the codebook very, very clean, make reference to the grounds, and then come back and get the detail into the rules and regulations after we have time to sit down and talk about the application and that type of thing, and we can take various types of events in mind when we do that.
Yeah, kinda my major concern is, is that, um, just that, for, for all that we're doing to create an environment inside the, the, uh, inside the center and, and get more people to go to concession stands as much as possible and market that into things, that, that it's just not a, a situation where it's, everybody kinda brings their own and then, uh, Global Spectrum's kinda left with, "Well, we can't sell food because everybody's eating out in the parking lot." And so it does, it is encouraging that if it is crafted in a way that it's, it's organized and, and, uh, that kind of thing, I, I, I'm a lot more comfortable with something like that.
I think to that point, I might add a couple of things that Jason said. I think you'll see a lot of times too where it's a Bicentennial Center-driven function that is out there, um, for different things, whether it's a, um, before an event, after an event, something like that, where they are the ones who are the driving force behind it or, or designating the area and serving whatever it may be that's served. But, uh, it's not just, not just the tailgating piece, I think there will be other aspects as well, where they will use that based upon the event and the type of activity. And the second piece I would throw in there is, we have had a lot of, uh, requests from people who attend the bomber's games and different stuff like that for the ability to tailgate, and that was part of the reason we've, we brought this before you as well.
Right, and, and, and just kind of seeing things down the road, I think that, you know, there's gonna be, uh, there would be a general, uh, perception that, hey, you can, you can, uh, tailgate in the Bicentennial Center parking lot, and I think it goes to how clearly defined, do you anticipate we're gonna have to put up any signs that say, you know, you, like this ordinance is clearly delineating where you can't do this or when or anything? Because I think kinda when the word, if the word gets out that it's like, "Well, you can party, you can, uh, tailgate and party in the parking lot," then, then people kinda tend to, don't pay attention to the details and, and, uh, we kinda end up with something that we didn't quite expect, so...
Sure.
Just trying to figure out how you keep that from happening.
Well, and I think that goes back to the rules, rules and regulations portion, and again, not that you wanna craft something that's, that's blanket and will cover everything, but I think each event will have different things, and with those in place, if somebody's doing something that we, we don't deem to be appropriate, we have the ability within this to say, "Hey, this is not part of the rules and regulations established for this event."
Yeah, Commissioner, I think you already hit on it, when, when we referenced those other locations and that you have to treat them like a special event, when we, some time ago, really talked about those, we already contemplated a lot of things about boundaries and signage and all that type of stuff, so we're probably about eighty percent there already, just with our prior thinking regarding those locations. But I don't think it'll be too difficult for us to, to get together and come up with some, uh, regulations and rules that make sense and things, you know, markings, whatever that might need to be in there.
Okay, and is this, and you guys could speak for Global Spectrum, but is this driven kinda primarily from Bicentennial Center management, or is it something that we've kind of...
I would say, and I don't wanna speak for, for Global, 'cause Chris and I were discussing this prior to him leaving, but Global certainly had a desire to utilize some of their outdoor space for different stuff, uh, different ways to program the space, different ways to maybe, uh, involve the public in the different events that they have. At the same time too, as I mentioned earlier, we also had the public saying, "Hey, can we tailgate out here? Can we," you know, and there was a, obviously, uh, not the ability to do that.
And part of my question is, is also to kinda suggest that they're not gonna harm their own profit center, one, and two, perhaps they have some sort of answers to how you deal with parking lot issues and tailgating and some of those other issues, so I mean, if you do have some of those, I'd be interested in hearing that, because, um, I know they have the experience of running these types of venues and, and perhaps that's a part of...
Do you have anything to add on that, Ron?
I mean, specifically to answer your question, I think as far as our profit centers, you know, I would argue that, that, uh, you know, bringing an event from outside or whether it's pre or post an event, um, would only add to the energy and add to the excitement and maybe keep those fans coming back longer, and, and yeah, it might hurt incrementally, but overall, it would actually be a net gain. So I would think that, uh, you know, kinda fostering that, you know, for the bomber's example specifically, fostering that team atmosphere and that image and, and really growing that fan base and giving them something more than just a football game could, uh, be a long-term reward for a very minimal, short-term, you know, loss. Um, and as far as the other events go, I mean, that, this guy's kinda the limit and, and what we can do there, and I don't have any specific examples today to plug into those spaces, since this is kinda a concept, but, but it would allow us to grow and, and see what other events we have currently on the books or something we can create that could, you know, tie into something else going on in the city or, or something on our own or, or, you know, what have you.
But you feel like this is something that'll make the center much more profitable and marketable and...
I definitely think that, that, uh, it, it gives us the ability for, for the fans, you know, of, of specifically the bombers or, you know, for maybe some other events to, uh, to, to kinda be more than just the initial event, so it's like we're creating an event inside of an event, so it will grow. Will it be this huge wave of, of cash? Probably not, but it will, it definitely will eventually be profitable and, um, I think we'll, uh, we'll, we'll see it on the flip side, um, as we move forward.
And Commissioners, the way their contract's set up, there's really no advantage for them to not be profitable, as profitable as they can for an event, so...
Right.
I expect those guys will analyze with whatever particular event they may consider it, have talks with the folks up higher, and then decide if it's a good strategy or not. So I don't think you're gonna be seeing that with every event.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you for all your information. Any public comment on this matter? I'm bringing it back to the Commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance fourteen dash one zero seven three zero.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, five zero.
Item seven point two, resolution number fourteen dash seven zero seven eight, authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain property to Ovation Cabinetry Incorporated.
Mr. Binkston?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In two thousand one, I'm sorry.
Oh, we were saying, thanks, Billy Guy.
Oh, I know, okay.
Au revoir.
In two thousand one, uh, the city issued industrial revenue bonds for the Ovation Cabinetry facility at seventeen fifty Wall Street. Uh, when we're speaking of industrial revenue bonds, as you might recall, we're speaking of a conduit financing. The city's full faith and credit is not at risk, but the project is able to utilize the city's borrowing capability, uh, through the use of bonds, uh, to fund the project. Under state law, the way that is secured is that the properties actually, the title transfers to the city, uh, during the time that the bonds are being paid off, the property has been leased to the developer, and it is the lease payments that retire the bonds. Uh, we've come to the point, uh, where that, uh, those bonds have been fully paid, and this is the part, I'm afraid, where we have to give it back. Uh, so the resolution authorizes the mayor to, uh, sign the deed and the various documents that terminate the lease, transfer the property, and it is, does mark the successful completion of this, uh, project.
Any motions for staff?
Just, I just thought as I looked at that, is it, I mean, we, we joked about giving it back, but is it on the tax rolls during this time, the IRBs, it is, isn't it?
Yes, is the short answer.
We looked at the airport authority spokesman to explain, I know.
Well, it's, it, it is in that, uh, and frankly, I cannot recall precisely the terms of the applicable exemption here. IRBs qualify for up to a ten-year exemption. Under our plan, we have, depending on job creation and, uh, capital investment, a formula determines what percentage of exemption applies during the first five years and the second five years. Certainly, we know after ten years, which more than ten has passed, uh, to my knowledge, uh, Mr. Franz might be able to provide more detail, but to my knowledge, it would have been subject to whatever the policy dictated in that first ten years, and from, uh, the ten-year mark would then have been fully, uh, fully on the tax rolls.
So nothing's gonna change over tomorrow, all of a sudden, we're not gonna get fifty thousand dollars in property tax, what we were getting for probably the last four years.
No, that's, that's correct. The, the bond, the period of potential qualification for tax, uh, benefits is a ten-year period, dependent on the formula, the operation of the formula, and then, of course, the bond, uh, the term of the bonds is a separate question.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment? I'm bringing it back to the Commission.
I move with resolution number fourteen dash seventy seventy eight, authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain property to Ovation Cab, Cabinetry, Inc.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries, five zero. We have no development business. Does anyone have any other business?
We have a little bit of business. I've got a quick question for staff though, is, uh, we're gonna need to go back into executive session. Is this one going to just be for, uh, for the confidential data, secrets of the corporation one, or is it...
No, we'll, we'll cover, uh...
Do we need both again?
The, we'll cover the, I'm sorry, let me...
Do we need both for the personnel and the...
You'll need the personnel, the legal, and the trade secrets.
Okay, we'll do the whole thing again. How long are we gonna need?
I'd say you need an hour.
Okay.
I'll try to get you in an hour.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move with recess from the executive session for sixty minutes to discuss the legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that the public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation for the reason that the public discussion of the information would competitively disadvantage the corporation, and for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel, for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and reconvene at six twenty P.M.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Do we expect any, uh, action on any of the matters?
No, we do not.
No, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are in executive session.
With areas of blowing snow in the forecast, cumul...